Two pats and 19 at 6:30, or we will currently stand for the pledge. Deputy Mayor, would you do the honors?
May deliverance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk?
The Village Attorney would like to enter into an executive session today, November 19, 2019, for the proceedings regarding a pending settlement.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All right, let's do it. If you could remind anybody if they have a question.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All right, ask for the questions based on calculated items. We have one from Mr. Dan Oppenheimer. If you would approach the mic and share what's of your concern.
Thank you. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
And early happy Thanksgiving wishes to everyone.
Thank you.
Just a few questions on the tax sociariate item on the docket. So page three of the section, I guess that would be one, two. Page four of that section lists the breakdown of the dollar amounts on this. 124.
Page three at what's?
Page four out of the section that begins with Agenda November 19, 2019, resolved upon the recommendation. So starting at that section, page four, it has a little block of the number breakdown in the middle of the page.
Go ahead.
Yes, definitely.
Tom?
So the top line, it says the amount due from 2009-10 through 17-18, period of nine years, 124,000, almost $125,000. So about $13,800 per year. Were the owners making any village tax payments during that time period of nine years?
They were making some, but not full payments.
So 50% or just some?
I don't know exactly what percentage. When you don't make a full payment, your tax bill isn't paid, so to speak. The money is placed in escrow and is held until you make a full payment. So I don't know what percentage of the payment they were making. And I don't know if it was the same percentage for each year, but it was partial payments.
Okay. And until this agreement is voted on and approved, they still are owing that amount, at least that amount, if not more than that?
Correct.
Okay. There is a reference to a different date, which actually is on, I think is possibly mistaken. So page two of this section, in the middle, the third, be it further resolved, it refers to tax years 2004-2005. So how did that come into this? I thought this was all '09 through?
Looking for it. Be it further resolved by what the trustees have had upon.
So after the first page, go to the second page in the middle, the third, be it further resolved.
Yes. It shouldn't say '04, '05, it should say '09, '10.
All right.
Is that the timetable?
Correct.
All right, good. Because I was wondering if there's a statute of limitations on it. I mean, eventually can you?
With tax sociaries, there aren't, but it should say 2009 to that date.
Okay. So question number three. So going back to that same box and just below it, refers to reducing the assessment to 12,500 per year for the 2021 to 2023 period, correct? So if this is agreed upon?
You have paragraph six?
The following paragraph.
Paragraph six, at the very bottom, yes, paragraph six.
Yes, okay.
But in, for the interim years, going back to the box in the middle of the page, the amount due from 2018-19 through 1920. So after the first nine-year period, but before the next three years, the amount you're collecting is much less than that, only 10,616 per year.
Ms. Oppenheimer, I don't know where you're at.
Okay, let me just put it. So between here and the question. So on the second line of that, you're only collecting 10,600 per year for those two years, and then after that, it goes back up to 12,500. So why would that not also be 12,500 during that interim period?
The assessment for 2021 and the next three years is going to be 12,500.
Correct.
You're asking me about?
The prior two years.
And 1920.
Exactly. So you divide that amount by two, and you get about 10,600 per year.
Correct.
So why would it be that much less for that short period of time?
So this is a settlement, and it's actually a total payment of 22,727.38, right? So roughly $11,350. The fact that they reached a settlement of 12,500, what happens is that there's a recommendation made by the villages expert and a recommendation made by the petitioners expert, that 12,500 represents the number that they agreed upon in the middle. So it doesn't, it's not going to be straight and math. It doesn't necessarily reflect that it should have been $25,000 in that box in paragraph three. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it would make sense to me that that should be 25,000 in that box.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That 12,500 just represents the number that they agreed upon for the EDP going forward.
It's a number potentially that both sides are going to agree on in aggregate, and as each individual number is not set in stone in terms of an assessment.
What each individual number?
Well, the second line is a lower assessment than your increase in the assessment the following three years after that.
No, that 21, 230, 214 is the amount due from 2018-19 through 2019-20. 2018-19 has already passed, so I don't know if there were partial payments there.
Understood. Partial payment, okay. Now, this may be a separate issue, but this refers only to village taxes, not to town of Hempstead, not to Nassau County taxes, not to school taxes?
Correct.
Are there, in anybody's knowledge, are there any outstanding monies owed to the school district in Hempstead outside of this agreement? Anyone know? No, okay, all right, thank you.
Does the Board wish to approve matter one that was discussed in executive session?
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Does the Board of Trustees wish to approve matter two that was discussed in executive session?
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Patricia Perez, Village Clerk. The Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting, November 4, and the special meeting on November 8. Be read aloud.
Before we move that, I just think, Mayor, at your discretion, it would probably be good because it was a special meeting to at least announce the highlights that occurred during that special meeting, given the significance.
You have a trustee?
I don't have the names, of course, that's why I'm asking.
The names of the four?
Do you have them? Chief May, he's trying to go by heart, but I don't know.
Yeah. There was four village residents who hired as police officers. One was a Mr. Bouchard, one was a Jordi Garcia, a Nico of Green, and?
Bertrand.
Bertrand, that was the first one.
Can't remember his first name, his last name is Bertrand.
Bertrand, right, I'm sorry, and?
Bottom line is, we have five.
Four. Four new village police officers, all village residents.
This morning during that special meeting, so, okay, congrats.
That's right.
Thank you.
Do you want to mention that directly that the money towards June 5th?
Okay.
It's one of the questions being asked later.
So do you want to make that announcement as I was in the first question?
When was this meeting? November 8?
And also, we were able to fund our junior fire department program from one of our business students who has donated, what is it, $20,000 a year to the juniors program. And so now the fire department is going to be recruiting at our high school and junior high school to get our young people involved with the fire department. And we were able to get that funding without it coming from the village budgets, because we didn't have it in the budget, so that was another compliment.
Which business owner is it?
FDR. FDR, laundry services.
Is it only for Hempstead Village kids?
Yes, that's a question you rest, but later.
Thank you.
Yeah, while you do mention it, though, I just need to get a clarification too, because we do have Hempstead village residents who are not in the Hempstead School District. They'd be eligible.
Yes.
So it's not just the high school, middle school of Hempstead. I mean, whatever's.
Building school.
School and town. Yeah, that's a good example. Okay, thank you.
Any motion?
Unmove.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Reported the Village Justice for the month of October 2019. Total number of cases before the court, 3,138. Total numbers remitted to the village controller, 319,857. Copy of this report is on file with Village Clerk office during regular business hours. Clerk wishes to report that Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Wimpro have approved the miscellaneous business licenses. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Charlize Vanderhold, Village Attorney, to authorize settlement in tax sociariate matter of Julianne and Ariana Ventures LLC with a property known as 44 Madison Avenue, Hempstead, New York, for the tax years 2009 to 2010 through 2019 to 2020, in a total amount of $125,000.
With the necessary corrections.
With the necessary corrections.
Right.
I just got a question, and you may not know the answer. How are we running up against budget on all this tax circus that come through?
We don't know for sure how many are going to come due during the rest of the fiscal year, but on estimate, we're a couple hundred thousand dollars over.
And just to add, with regards to this tax, there's no actual payment that's being made from the village's budget in this refund. We're actually giving the, we're moving to allow the business owner to get a clean slate and begin to pay taxes because the property was heavily oversessed. So now that we've agreed to, we've agreed to a value, they can begin paying that, according to.
Right, the 125 is a credit.
Right.
Essential.
So it's more like a water sugar?
Yes.
That's the word.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Larry Lutz, purchasing agent, and Shalene Thompson, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves bid number seven H-E-N-B, 2019-2020 Safe Routes to School Project, Jackson Main Elementary School in the village of Hempstead, to be awarded to the primary vendor, J. Anthony Enterprises, 175 Engineers Road in Hawkeye, New York, in a bid amount of $524,875.
So move. Second.
Question on this. Did we have grant money? Did we have grant monies for this? Are we above the grants that we received? Because this bid is for 41% over what was originally a $310,000 project, it's now a $525,000 project.
There's a second grant, I believe, is being reallocated to cover the excessive or the high bid, or the higher than anticipated bid.
Do we have, we've been awarded the grant already?
My understanding is that, yes, that we're just reallocating it to this project.
So we're reallocating from a safe routes to school grant? Or reallocating?
Yes, yes, it's another safe routes to school. That's my understanding.
So there will be no cost to the village itself?
That, correct, that this is still, this would all be covered by grant.
Can anyone speak to what this is?
Excuse me?
What the safe routes to school grant is?
No, what work are we doing where we thought it was going to be a $310,000, that's now $525,000? Jackson Main's not on.
Neither Shalene or Ricky are here, but my understanding is that it was going to be the reclaiming of certain roads. Let me see if that's in the backup. No, do you have it there?
Yeah, actually, Trustee Daniels, the last three pages list the entire project. What's the chart?
I think it's more sidewalks and curb ramps than it is roadways.
Right.
Yes, it's more sidewalks.
It's for walkers. And we did have a report from the engineer that was working on it, that the bids were coming in much higher than anticipated for other entities as well.
This will be the only bid that'll be received.
It is the only bid?
Yes, it's the only bid received.
Do we know why that is?
Why was the only bid?
Why did only one group respond?
Don't know.
Nothing can indicate why. But they have said that this company has done numerous products specializing in every construction or work.
I believe they weren't, I believe they aren't even as toys as well. The first time, there was no response.
Where were they advertised?
I don't know where they are. Is it the beacon only?
Beacon, sometimes the news day depends which one they chose. There's a process.
I mean, the purchasing department will try to distribute it to as many people as possible in addition to running advertisements. But in work like this, sometimes you do get somebody that's a sole bidder, and they're going to bid high. Other people have other businesses or other things they prefer to do. And you get somebody that bids high figuring, eh, if I get the work, you know, I'll do it at a higher margin. It's not unusual in construction to do that.
What's unusual is to be 41%.
Yes, that's true.
That's not 10%.
I don't know if the opinion, yeah, the opinion is in here from Michael Boris, the engineer, that these, I believe he does state in here, that though it's 41% higher, that seems to be where the market is these days.
Is there, is there, is there a question regarding the makeup, the other 41%, where that's coming from?
Among others, I would question how good is Michael Boris if he doesn't know what the market is? Why would we use an engineer who's going to give us one price estimate, and then he says, oh, it came in higher, now it's $525,000? And are we going to rely on him as an expert? He doesn't seem like an expert, to me, no offense, I don't know. But that's way, that's 41% high. That's not a little bit of money.
When are they looking to start this job? This construction?
I don't know, I mean, it's up to the board if you want to.
Well, is there a problem? We hold this off until the next meeting when we have the information in front of us?
I don't think that they're prepared to do anything, given where the weather's at.
Right, okay.
You can't pour concrete.
But this was, this being done through the CDA?
Yes.
Yes, this is their agreement.
It's, yes, the CDA agreement.
So if the work isn't going to happen between now and the next meeting, I mean, if the Board is comfortable, I don't think there's anything wrong with pulling in. And when the Commissioner or Ricky Cook is here, you can ask these questions.
Right, I'll get some more definitive answers.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
You're not worried about them?
Absolutely not. The fact of the matter is, I wish I had done earlier, I could have called and had his answers, but I'll give them.
So does it need? Trustee Wimpro, so we've got to withdraw the motion. Are you willing to withdraw, or do you want?
Yes, I am. I withdraw my motion.
Okay, at this time, we're going to make a motion.
No, no, I was just trying to, this wasn't added, I wasn't?
No, it wasn't.
Oh, okay, that's why I was confused with that.
At this time, they're going to, we're going to make a withdrawal of the motion. I need a motion to withdraw?
So move.
No, isn't he just?
I thought we were ready to do that.
Yeah, but I got a vote for the withdrawal. For him to withdraw the motion, you have to take a vote? No, it's just for drawing. Okay. Yeah. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan, the Board of Trustees. Hereby approves the authorization to be granted for the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with MCS Consultants, Inc., 2138 Wanta Avenue, Suite 101, Wanta, New York, to provide security services that will safeguard all employees and visitors to the village hall since December 1, 2019, through May 31, 2021. Be it resolved that Mayor B and he hereby is authorized to execute instead of being on behalf of the village of Hempstead on such terms and conditions as be acceptable to the village attorney.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Just, I'm sorry, just a, not really a question, a statement. The clerk's office deals with security. Just please make sure, in light of things that's been happening nationwide, that they stick to the duties and responsibilities we access, voice, communication, radios, and things like that. Just pass that information on, please.
Trustee Johnson?
I said yes already.
So, Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan? Item number eight has been pulled. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan and the Board of Trustees, that authorization is hereby granted for the closure of, for all non-essential employees for the village of Hempstead at 12 noon, village departments at 12 noon on Wednesday, November 27, and Tuesday, which is the day before Thanksgiving, and Tuesday, December 24, Christmas Eve, to benefit the employees who work that day.
So move. Second.
Just add a request to that, that gets communicated by the website, so that the residents know that.
I'm sorry, sir.
Can we make sure that that gets blasted on the website, so the residents understand that? If you have somebody come knock on the door, and everybody's gone?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think that's fair.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hads?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Wimpro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Addendum item number one. I'm going to read first what this is in reference to before I go to the resolution. The village of Hempstead designed to make sure that the water sewer system provides the utmost service to its residents. Given the age and the status of the water sewer collection and distributions, the benefits of these improvements allows us to target the resources efficiently without sacrificing the quality of service. It also allows the accurate assessment of every sewage pipe of the existing sewage collection system, and the system is conveyed to all locations within the Incorporated Village of Hempstead as required flow rates and minimum pressure. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Frank Germanero, Director of Public Works, that authorization be granted for the village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with Camron Engineering and Associates, LLP, 100 Sunnyside Boulevard, Suite 100, Woodbury, New York, to provide professional engineering services including hydraulic model of sewage collection system and water distribution system, for fee for water of $81,000 and sewer $89,000, totaling $170,000. Furthermore, that the Mayor B and he hereby is authorized to execute same on behalf of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead on such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the village attorney.
So, a second, and probably would ask for an amendment to the addenda, if that's possible, that remove Frankie's name from the amendment, because while Frankie was consulting on that, he didn't necessarily push it, if it would be, if it were the right word. So, I mean, I'm going to put my name there, anybody who's going to put their name there, feel free. But just in all fairness, go back into the records, wouldn't want to reflect that.
What about the amendments?
The amendment is that we're going to remove Frankie Germanero, the Director of Public Works, and put trustee Jeffrey Daniels.
I think she said the amount. Amount.
Oh, the amount. Oh, $81,000 for water and for the sewers, $89,000, totaling $170,000.
Okay, I had that question as well. Now, we all understand the need for the model. No later, there'll be questions about conditioning and the water supply. But the resolution doesn't seem to me to be complete or complete picture. They're blind. The question I would ask is, where's the money coming from? It should be reflected in the resolution, in my opinion.
Should this supposed to come from the developer? Isn't it supposed to come from the developer? And according to the nest of developer?
Well, I, you know, I'll tell you that with the money, the money's there, it comes out of the general fund, just like any other bills and warrants that come through the village. To try to call this out, and you have to draw a dotted line to a specific line in the budget, is a little disingenuous. There's nothing else in this village that goes through this. The millions of dollars that get paid out to the village, never been asked, what line is this coming from?
I think in this instance, the question asked from the audience is a valid one. It's been our understanding that the monies were going to be the obligation of the developer in terms of the water and sewer obligation, and not the residents per se. To tell us that we have extra money, presumably you're going to tell me ProChamps or whatever, isn't really fair. What would be fair is if you defined it in the resolution. It appears a bit blind. The resolution does not give us a complete picture. And I would suggest that it needs to be redeveloped. I agree with you, and I think the idea of removing Frank Germanero's name was a good recommendation, should not have been there. And I think at the same time, we have some pieces missing. And obviously, who is going to be paying this bill is a major one.
Now, I was under the impression that the developer was paying for the study for the development area, so that box. This study, it goes beyond the downtown area, but this is a study for the entire village of Hempstead, because in the beginning, what the developer is supposed to pay for does not reflect on what will happen to the rest of the village. If we start doing this sort of work, our whole infrastructure with our piping and everything is antiquated, and so we need a study for the entire village. And so this was not for just downtown, this is for the entire village.
And I think it needs to be reflected in any resolution, because their transparency is the key word that we've used in this village incorrectly. It doesn't explain to us that this is not the footprint of the project, it's only village, that this money is not necessarily going to be the taxpayer. It's new money we got through a contract that we made with whomever, ProChamps, I guess is the answer. And the fact is, it's been the understanding of us right from the beginning that the developer was going to be? And that the fact is, it's been the understanding of us right from the beginning, that the developer was gonna bear this type of expense. If it is otherwise, it should be reflected in this addendum. The addendum, to me, comes up short, it doesn't paint a complete picture.
What else would you like to see? Can I get my question answered?
Question?
What, what would you like, what would you like to see?
I would like to actually see a conversation with you.
We cannot see a conversation.
I would like to hear a conversation with you prior to a board meeting, that you've had ample opportunity. I'm here six-thirty to six-thirty, come in and say, Mayor, here's what I'm thinking, what do you think? And we could have a bit of a dialogue. It seems we wait too often to go in front of the public, and then questions are asked that could be answered easily earlier, so that we are on the same page. And until that happens, we're going to have the same type of knocking events.
I've, I've, I've asked you, what do you want to see, and you're telling me you want to see what you, you.
I use the word you hear instead of saying.
You painted a picture, you painted a picture to the public that this is not transparent, and then you went on a dialogue about how it's not transparent to you. So I, I'm asking you what it is that you would like reflected in the resolution.
An opportunity to discuss this in advance, so that we have a common ground. We need an element of trust.
Yeah. Just, just for the, for the public's understanding, a lot of times when DPW and other departments of public service fix a issue, they're putting a Band-Aid on a big open wound, because we do not have a clear picture on what our entire system looks like. What this is trying to do is to model out our system as it exists, so that we don't fix the corner of Main and, and Center Street when the real problem may be a half a mile away. That's all this does, and should we ever get to a point, whether it be light industrial or anything else that we wanna put downtown, yes, there will be a mechanism there in which we can tap into the development per the developer agreement or whomever is that wants to develop to rebuild back these costs. What we have to be very careful about is arguing about the issue, whether it's really for the village or really for development, because it would make it very difficult to get it from a developer if we're sitting here saying something different.
And I think the issue with the model.
And, and just, and, and just to be clear, the cost for this is being paid by the Ripley House. Seventy-five thousand dollars a year from the Ripley House over the last two years, which was the agreement that this board, uh, for Bishop Hobbs was on this board, agreed to five-zero, so the monies have already been allocated. We're not charging anybody anything, that money was already there.
I think the question about the model makes sense. What doesn't make sense is, the explanation that's being given doesn't say it in the resolution. Who's paying? What is it covered? Is it the developer? Is it the entire village? It appears a bit blind. Later, I know, we're gonna have to discuss conditioning or upgrades, whatever you wanna call it. And there's still the water supply issue and others that are gonna come down the pike. But a resolution should be, should be complete on its face. This resolution is not a complete picture, it leaves too much for questions. And you're giving us some of the answers as you go along, these could have been provided earlier, anytime in the last couple of weeks or before that, or at least in writing, so that we can all have a complete and fair understanding of what the resolution so states.
Understood, uh, before you move to vote, before you move to vote, before we move to vote, um,
Good point.
I would, I would ask, I would ask the question is, um, are you not the, the Chair of the CDA?
I am indeed.
So how does the Chair of the CDA not know when a budget is coming over forty-one percent over budget?
That's, issue is a previous question that has since been resolved, it doesn't deal with.
It has not, it has not been resolved?
All right, but let's, let's fall away this, I have a concern about trust, and until it gets resolved, I need to look at this real specifically.
Trust cuts two ways.
It, it's fine with me.
All right, you guys, I was.
It's fine with me.
Can we focus, I wish we'd do better communication too, but I don't think this is the time. Why, why?
No, I, I wanna ask you a few questions in regards to this.
Okay, trustee Johnson has the mic.
And she doesn't, she doesn't have it, this is not public session, so we should not allow, whether we agree with what she says or not, to answer questions back and forth.
I agree, I agree.
Back and forth for the public.
Okay.
It's, it's a, the time for that, it's public session, people can't just voluntarily call out and say what they wanna say, and then we say, I agree with it or I disagree.
Okay, point taken, point taken.
We have, we have, we have, most of the information, most of the information, it's a time for anyone to speak.
That's right.
When they have a question, no other time. So whether we agree with what you're saying or not, that's not appropriate. I have a few questions in regards to this water study. One of the questions is, what is the amount that the master developer was supposed to pay? Is it the same amount that we're, we're trying to use this, this, these funds for? What is the exact amount? Can somebody tell me the amount of money that the master developer was supposed to pay into this water study? Or sewer study, whatever you wanna call it?
Sure, the, the, there's kind of apples and oranges, think that the, what the master developer laid out was specific to the, the sites that they were technically owned or controlled, right? Which would be parking lots and others downtown. What this is, is for the entire Village of Hempstead. So whether it goes all the way as far south as Southern State Parkway, east-west, the entire Village of Hempstead, or from the sewer perspective, and from on the water side, on the distribution portion of the water, not the water supply, which would be different, which would come from Hall's marker, not come from Cameron.
Okay, so, my question is, master developer, what amount, did they meet the requirements? Did they meet their obligations to pay for the water study, yes or no?
They were not obligated for this water study. Again, because it's two different pieces. Now, portions of this study, right, would be needed for anything that they wanted to do downtown, and then we would have a baseline calculation for which to go back and charge.
I'm aware that my question is, that the master developers, whatever they agreed to do, did they do it?
Or would they be paying a portion of this stuff?
You mean with respect to the downtown project, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
You're talking about these by state developing, right?
So you're telling me that the master developer, who obviously is well-funded, what amount of money would they possibly come in?
So the master developer has an open invoice for two sites, from what I understand, that totals roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that had not, that had not been paid, but the, the work that was done that's open for that was to literally snake a sewer line behind buildings to reconnect to the new sewer pumping station.
Okay, so, so we have, we have, we have a developer that's speaking of a two-point-five billion dollar project, and these are, that's not that much money, the money, amount of money that he's saying.
I believe the.
Why have, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Why have they not paid, paid what they said they was gonna pay? That's what I wanna know. What, what's the holdup? Why didn't it happen?
My understanding is they owe a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that's for the sewer study and part of the downtown project, and they owe behind. And why they haven't paid is an excellent question.
I can't speak for why anybody hasn't paid or.
My, my, my next question is, is there any other board besides the village's board, the zoning board, or any other board, that's gonna have something to say in regards to the water supply?
Yes.
I need, I need to hit after the village attorney.
Yes.
And who was that board?
The planning board.
So what exactly is on the table and when?
Next week, Monday, RDUA has applied for an extension of their site plan approval for two of the projects.
Just let me repeat that, it's next Monday that the planning board is gonna be asked for this extension.
They pre, they previously sought an extension November of two thousand eighteen, um, for the site plan approval, and it was granted on the condition that they make the agreement of the, I believe it's, I thought it was a hundred and ninety-six thousand, I think, but it's either one-seventy or a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Okay.
Um, they had to pay back to cover the cost for the sewer and water study in the downtown area, which is separate from what trustee Daniels has sorted out in this resolution. They failed to make that payment, there were several requests made for them to make that payment, they did not, so the planning board revoked their, uh, site plan extension, because they didn't need the condition. They've now come back to us and said, can you extend it? And the planning board will decide what they decide on Monday at six-thirty PM.
So, are you able to give a legal opinion in regards to, should we, is this premature for us to vote for this? Or should we wait for the outcome, what happens on Monday?
I think that these are two separate issues.
They're two separate issues?
Correct.
Just a point of clarification, but tell me if I'm wrong on that, but the, when you look at the resolutions from the planning board, the two sites that are upcoming next week did not have those conditions. The conditions for the additional payment were on other sites.
No, they were on these two that.
Got them on this two, these two?
Yes.
Okay, I saw them on the other two, I didn't see them on this one.
Yeah, so, the only one that did not have the condition was Del Potts Company, because there was no need, they didn't have the sewer water.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I was.
Okay, so.
To answer your question, trustee Johnson, I believe that the two are separate.
So what's, what's the major goal, if, if we approve this, I'm asking trustee Daniels, what, what is the goal? What is our goal? Are we doing this for the infrastructure, or are we doing it for developers? Who, who are we, what are we doing this?
We're doing this for, for the village, for the infrastructure in the village, because this allows us to model our baseline, in other words, they're going to put flow meters on each, uh, certain pipes within the Village of Hempstead, and they will measure over a period of time the flow of both sewer, rainwater, distribution system throughout the village, so we can see where we're backed up on areas that need focus, where we know if we can alleviate a problem here, it's gonna alleviate something upstream or downstream, so it's really for the village of Hempstead. Now, there will be benefits from this study, so a portion of this, because obviously the lines run through downtown as well, and anything that we can reallocate and push onto, uh, the development community, I'll be the biggest adversary for that, I want that to happen. I'll be the biggest proponent of that, to remove the cost from us onto anybody else that's going to tap in.
I, I have, I have one suggestion, I have one suggestion then. This water study, we pay for the water study, and it kind of overlays or helps out the developer, we still, the, the part of the money that they, we still need them to pay their money.
Absolutely.
So how can it, how can this be written in such a way where it says that the money has been spent, that doesn't let them off the hook for what they said that they was gonna contribute to the water?
That, that, that is already part of the documentation, from my understanding and reading of the master development agreement. The part that's missing in that is the billing mechanism to bill them back.
Okay.
And what this does is, is it gives you the baseline for which to bill them back.
I understand it, but by this resolution, how can we be compensated if some of the work that benefits them is done, and they haven't contributed what they were supposed to contribute? I don't want us to pay for something.
Nor do I.
And leave them off the hook, and then it's nothing in writing and says, okay, we did this work, where's the money at? Because they already haven't paid.
So.
They, they, well, nobody would get a building permit if they didn't pay. Right? No one's gonna start anything unless they get paid, get their pay, their fair share mitigation cost of any infrastructure work that gets done, right? We have control over that. But to your specific point, if we wanna say, put language in the resolution that kind of crosses it and ties it back to the fair share mitigation associated with the comprehensive plan and the master development agreement, I, I prefer the comprehensive plan, because that covers everybody, whether they're part of the master development or not, right? Because anybody can come and build. We wanna make sure anybody that does that prepare their fair share mitigation for these costs, so that they're not going by the village.
I also, um, I don't want to go ignore it, and trustee Daniels kind of hit on it, that you have to recall that even with this board's action in, um, entering into a tax agreement with the Ripley, part of that agreement was that they were gonna make payments for the next seven years in, specifically for infrastructure, right? And, and it's outlined in the agreement that that, it's actually like seventy-one-five due each March is specifically for infrastructure, and that's going into our fund for that use. So going forward, I think that this board has been aggressive with any, um, already existing, uh, commercial properties or, um, apartment buildings coming to us who want tax agreements. You guys have been pretty aggressive with getting your pound of flesh to go into this stuff. So Ripley is an example of that. They paid the seventy-one-five, March of two thousand nineteen, which is the first payment that was due, they have another payment due.
Eighteen, I think it was eighteen.
I thought you signed it November eighteen, and it was due March, okay.
Eighteen would've been the first payment.
Eighteen was.
Yeah, no, it's by.
All right, but there's another one.
There's another one.
Um, due March twenty-twenty. So I just want you to make, I wanna make it aware, there is a fund that has been started, and at least that's one developed, if you will, one commercial property that I know, that's paying into that infrastructure fund that's supposed to be for items such as this.
And how many payments were they making, of twenty-one to seventy-one thousand?
Seven, seven.
Seven?
Seven years.
It's seven, it is seven years, yes.
It was a total of four hundred and fifty thousand.
And I would suggest one more time, that I can't find any of that in this resolution.
So.
And that the resolution should be complete on face, it is not, it's kind of blind. The question that residents need to know and have a right to know is, who pays us? And it doesn't need to be a dialogue at the meeting, if this is an addendum, which I don't know why it's an addendum anyway, but if it is, why isn't it in the addendum, so that we have a complete picture that we can share with the audience?
So, what I, what I proposed to the board was that we could add in some language that would include, um, at the end of these studies, that any developers in areas, and this is, because this, remember, this is outside what we call the downtown zone, downtown area.
Right, it's complete, entire village.
This is the entire village, so, for example, someone wanted to develop at, at the end of South Franklin, right? They would fall under this, we could maybe come up with some language and draft a resolution that would incorporate possibly how we figure out what their fair share would be.
You're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna be able to.
That's not gonna come first step four.
Without the other steps being done.
There's gonna have to be steps one, two, and three before we get to four, which would be the fair share mitigation fee. But I'm still saying that the addendum, as it now exists, is not a complete picture. It needs to be if it's gonna get.
Village Attorney, the same, the same way you were diligent in making sure Nassau County paid that one-point-four million and one-point-five million, whatever million it was, will you give us that same dedication and due diligence to make sure that the master developer, whoever else, if they're not meeting their?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, let me ask you this, how did we, how did we do though with RDUA and the money they owe?
Well, I didn't revoke their site plan.
But did they pay the money?
They did not pay, that's why we revoked it.
And, but that, to me, shows us that there's not an exact science, we need to put this in writing, so that we have an understanding.
So.
Just, just, just a point, just a point before we get out, totally off the, the. Does the Village of Hempstead owe Cameron or whoever the engineer was that did the water study that's unpaid that money? Just to be clear.
For the downtown?
For the downtown, is it a bill of the Village of Hempstead?
It's billed to the Village of Hempstead, is my understanding, that it's billed to the Village of Hempstead.
And whose obligation, whose obligation is?
The obligation to pay.
Correct, so why we're saying, I just wanted to be clear, so the residents know that the Village of Hempstead residents did not get left holding a hundred and forty thousand dollar invoice because of a lack of payment by the master developer. The Village of Hempstead residents are not obligated to pay those dollars.
Right.
And this situation is not the same situation as that, just to put, and point, just two other quick points. One is that the, the FDR deal, to your point, was, the FDR was, the twenty thousand dollars is twenty thousand dollars increased beyond twenty thousand dollars as the costs go up for the fire system, but that was because they came in and requested an easement for, for, for Adams Court. And the, the licensee fee for the easement, we charged them twenty thousand dollars. This board has a history of now making sure that the residents do not give away what's here in the village. And we're asking that to continue. The same thing happens today, when you look at what was going on with, uh, over by Seven-Eleven, where they wanna build the retail and nine apartments, on top of that, that was passed, passed the planning board, passed that, that, that zoning board. The issue now is, they don't have sewer capacity to do that. They're arguing with us that it's our responsibility. This modeling project allows us to say, if you want to build that, you have to pay X amount of dollars to increase the capacity of that sewer line. Without that, we wouldn't even know what to charge them. This is just a baseline to get an understanding of what we have in front of us.
But that particular issue has other items to it as well. Maryland Avenue, for example, is a one-way, it's the only way to eat, breast, and exit that facility, so we have some concerns, that is among them. No question about it, and it will be a factor going forward. However, talking about the addendum issue here, it remains to me, as I've read this and reread it, that it's incomplete. And it shouldn't be voted upon unless we have a complete and full understanding, and we don't need it from a dialogue, we need it in writing, so we can see what the addendum actually intends, not what you think it intends.
Well, listen, it's been moved, it's second, so the next thing is, if there are no more questions, can we vote?
We can vote, move to vote.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Habs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Winfro?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, Village Treasurer, all meeting bills ordered by the Board of Trustees on check one dated November nineteen, two thousand and, November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, be approved as previously reviewed.
So move, second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Meeprow?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes. All right, let's go to the open mic place, Reverend Benjamin.
I just wanted to give you guys this, Mr. Whipple, I don't know what for you because you already got one. Um, that book is a reflection of the thing that Abolition Sir has been doing over the...
Is it on?
It sounds like it's on.
It's on.
It's on the bottom.
Just talk into the recording.
Can you give me that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let me just back up a little bit. And, um, and just acknowledge you all, trustee, uh, Lamont, trustee Hobbs, uh, mayor, uh, Brian, deputy mayor, Whipple, and trustee Daniels. Um, I'm here for a number of reasons. One of the first things I wanted to do is to, um, thank you, man, thank you deputy mayor for coming out to our annual event. Um, if I might brag this a little bit. I think during the time of that event, we had one of the safest few hours in the community that we've had in a long time. Because we had young men, that was from Cherry's Avenue, that was from the Heights, that was from Martin Luther King Drive, that was from most of the troubled areas in the community. And we had a very, um, very exciting, uh, program. Over a hundred and something young men and women came out, uh, to this program, uh, which I was very proud of because it was a very solemn occasion and it was very respectful. I, I might be able to comment on the fact that, um, there were some young boys, young men, uh, under sixteen, that was from Cherry's Avenue. They was the one out there steering those cars and making sure everybody got into the building, uh, got into the church safely. And I mean, it was a very powerful moment. And, um, I'm just sorry that something positive happened in the village of Hempstead and you didn't hear a peep about it. Nowhere. Um, if those men was out there fighting and trying to hurt each other, you would have heard throughout the entire, um, county and, and beyond. But because all of these young men and women came together in a peaceful environment, celebrating, um, the accomplishment that they're making in the community, you don't hear nothing about it. Um, what I wanted to talk about very quickly because we're running out of time already, um, is the fact that we have a hundred plus young men and women that are coming out of the criminal justice system. If anybody know me, you know, one of my pet peeves is giving people that are transitioning out of the criminal justice system a second chance. I would like, and I'll say this to you very boldly and clearly, may I be, uh, in a central part of that? Because that is the essence of what I try to do. These people that are coming home may have been forgiven for whatever, or given a second chance. But if they don't get an opportunity to get the help that they need, you can rest assured that they'll be back on the streets and in trouble and again in the criminal justice system. So I would like to be a part of that. I offer several different opportunities to deal with that. Um, and just to go back a little bit further, I want to reflect on what we have been doing in the community. We got a lot of young men and women working over at the Dale Bus Company. Um, I want to say this to you, mayor, because you came to me about six months ago talking about a young man, about what we're going to do. Even you, um, uh, the village attorney asked me about this individual. Nobody knows that he's been working over on that site for the last six months and is doing very well. And I know he had called a complaint and nobody gave him a chance. Well, he had a chance and he's been very successful. The other part that I wanted to bring attention to, I want to thank you Lamont Johnson for what you've been doing in terms of the initiative that we're dealing with in terms of building that school. We want to be a part of that. We don't want them to come in, everybody else get paid, they take our money and run out of the community. So we have been pushing the agenda that contractors and local people are involved in that. And so far, they offered us, uh, thirty slots. And I know that's as a result of your effort and I want to thank you for that. But, um, more than anything else, in terms of the jobs and opportunity to go in the community, I can tell you several different sites that people are really working. That's what we should be concentrating on. Uh, trying to put these young men and women, take them off the street, put them to work, give them a chance to take care of their family. And I guarantee you, crime won't just go down, it'll go down astronomically. I need you guys to help me, particularly, I'm concerned about those people that are coming. They said one hundred, but I'm almost sure that it's going to be much more than that. And if we don't give them an opportunity to get a job, go to work, and deal with the issues that they're, they're dealing with after they're transitioning out of the jail, you can guarantee you're going to have issues.
Reverend, um, Benjamin, I'm sorry because you, you know, you were walking fast to keep up with time. But you said that they were able to secure, uh, thirty positions to, um, trustee Johnson?
The developer, part of these development construction, I know we had a meeting with you, Lamont, and several other people following that meeting. They asked me to submit thirty names. The thing I like about this is it potentially union jobs.
Well, I think that deserves a.
Um, again, Lamont played a major role in that. And I'm just going to ask you, I know you sit on that committee, Lamont, to make sure that they follow through on that commitment and, and make sure that they keep their word in that. A lot of people make a lot of promises. They made the first step and I commend them for that. But we want to make sure they keep their commitments.
Are you at master?
Pardon me?
Are you at master?
I'm waiting on them to start as yet. Um, I was given a promise, commitment that they're going to work with our guys. Um, I know Dennis personally, he has been a person that have kept his word so far to me. And I'm looking forward to being a part of that as well as the Park East side. They have a component of, of internship for people transitioning out of the high school or just recently out of the high school. And I hope we pay attention to that because we can take those young men and put them to work immediately.
And we have had, uh, meetings and participated in so with a variety of people, including some of our own staff people, Anita Harwood, for example, and Commissioner Thompson. Reverend Mallett's been involved from the town Hampstead Department of Occupational Resources, Sheila Bino has called a meeting, all dealing with a number of people who are coming out. These are individuals who did not make bail, nonviolent, mostly misdemeanors, but it could be an E felony. And they're going to be sent back out into the community sometime early January. We don't know the exact number. The hundred figures seem to reflect what was going to happen to the Nassau County jail. But that jail alone is not just the only one that has Hempstead residents. So we have to see. Uh, part nine is going to be eliminated. That's the part of the court where you go if you need to have your bail reconsidered, get a court-appointed attorney, and go forward because you couldn't make bail originally for the misdemeanors. There's no need for it now. So the, uh, young people who are involved in the court system now are kind of rushing to get through the system so that come January, they're going to be one of those who can be released.
Well, I'm very concerned about it, mayor, because I don't want them to be part of some continuous cycle. They're going through programs and services and never getting the real tangible help that they need. These are young men and women that need an opportunity to go to work. Some of them need to be in, uh, rehab programs and things like that. But if we just do stuff the way we been doing stuff, just using them statistically so that other people can enrich themselves, we're going to have failure and then we're going to blame it all there. But in fact, some of these young people react in a hostile way because they...
Sorry.
Thank you.
So sorry.
Okay, but thank you. But if I could just give my thirty cents to, to you. The fact of the matter is this goes back to the idea of bail being unfair. And this has been an argument that's been made by a lot of people and it has some truth to it. People who can afford bail, pay bail. Can afford their best attorneys, get their best attorneys. And then in the comfort at home with good legal advice and without the pressure being in a jail setting, they make decisions that impact on the rest of their lives. So our young people end up in jail because they couldn't make bail. Court-appointed attorneys that may be good, but they could also be young, inexperienced, non-threatening. And they end up being there for several months.
Right.
And then at some point in time, they're approached, how would you like to go home tonight? All you have to do is plead guilty.
Right.
To the charges and you'll be released for time served. But the downward spiral begins because they now have a record.
Right.
And there's an inherent unfairness in that procedure. And this is going towards eliminating that obvious imbalance.
But I know that they will be coming to the community without proper support.
Well, we have to see if we can provide that. There's no argument about that. And there's a lot of agencies, yours included, that need to come to the forefront.
Just a last thing, Charlene Thompson is doing an excellent job. So this is not in design, uh, designed to critique her efforts in any part. She's doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
I would like to make a very quick remark in regards to the bail system. That may be true, uh, some of what you said there. However, I think we're going to have a serious problem with crime in Hempstead. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to give the police chief and the department the support that they need because they're going to need it.
Okay. That's the one aspect that we're not looking at in this situation.
Thanks for answering my question. Did the fire chief give a report in the beginning of the month? That's one.
Yeah, they had, they did their report.
Okay. Um, the ethics committee, um, who was chosen and how were they chosen? Um, do they currently sit on any other committee? And how long is the term? That's my question. Um, I have another question. Why are there benches on Main Street? Um, because we have a lot of people that sleep a lot of places in Hempstead. And I think that's, I don't know why we put benches on Main Street. Because we have a lot of people who've been intoxicated and we're going to have people sleeping on those benches on Main Street. And I think that was a good decision. And, and, um, I don't think our code enforcement is really doing a good job. And I'm saying that because I walk through the village just for a walk. A lot of debris is on the streets, on the sidewalks. Um, I don't know the street sweepers, if they're really doing it. But I know that we, the owners of the building are supposed to sweep in front of their building. It's not happening. And I think if we need to hire some more people, I don't mind the tax dollars or even getting our young people, let them do their credit, um, trustee. Let them do some credit, let them come out in, in the areas and, and do that as well. And also, trustees, I need your help. I got a great thing for you guys and people in the audience. Our school district has a STEM program at the Delphi University. We need thirty students from seventh to high school. We have a bus, but on the weekends, we don't have enough students to go. Sometimes the bus goes with no students on it. We need to recruit thirty students. Trust, you were on the board, you're on the board, you are a board member, you are a teacher, and you are, we know students. We have to get thirty students signed up so we don't lose this program. It's a STEM, a STEM program at Delphi. I need thirty students. I know you all have kids, you all have kids, you know, kids in the community. We need to, I need your help. We need to get the word out there. We don't want to lose this program. They have a bus that will pick them up and I'm trying to get them to go throughout the school district. Instead of their kids having to meet at the high school or the middle school, I'm trying to get them to go to the different areas to pick the kids up. We need thirty students enrolled so we don't lose this program at Delphi.
Where do they go? What are they showing going?
Excuse me?
Where do they go to? What do we send these names?
It's on Saturday mornings.
No, no, I mean, who gets the names?
Oh, you can get them, you can get them, you can give them to, um, the community school director Jasmine. Um, we can, you, you can get it to the high school principal or the middle school, or you can give it to me. Give it to me. We need these students. I don't want to lose this program. And, because they have robotics and they're going to help them with that wall. They're going to help them with all their, um, uh, earth science, algebra, whatever they need helping in every Saturday morning at Delphi. There's so many schools that are going, but the, our school is the only school district that gets a bus and they get snacks and everything. And we're the only school district that actually gets a bus. All, all the other school districts, the parents have cars and drop them off. But we're the only school district that they help out with.
That'd be very helpful if you had something that you could give us.
Yes, I will e, I will email it to you.
If you can put them in, I, I can speak for you and I can get it in the bulletin for the church, maybe on the announcements.
Please, okay, I will get it to you. Um, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
We really need to push it because we need thirty, they only need thirty students signed up. Because our kids did before, they had a robotics program. And we had all this stuff and they didn't even know that we had the computers and everything. But we need our students to, um, to sign up.
If you can email that, that'd be helpful.
Okay, so if you can answer my question about...
Are they announcing that in the, in the school district though?
We, we did, we, it was announced, but you know what it is? Some, some people just need to be talked to personally. We need to reach out because the, the fact is being sent home, but it's not being communicated and encouraged. Like, like you said with the firefighter program. If you tell these parents, your kids can go to college for free, you know, there's benefits. Like, like I'm, I'm first, I'm a, I'm, I'm a part of SER. I get, I have a forty-five, forty dollar phone bill because I'm a first responder. There's things that you can get, there's benefits, but we have to tell them the benefits. The parents don't know the benefit. So if I send something home and I'm not, they're not reading it, they don't know the benefit. So just like with the firefighter program, we have to let them know, there's a benefit to you doing that. So we reach out, kind of, if you tell people that you know and they have kids, they're going to listen to you.
I've been to the last couple of graduations at Delphi for this group and I advocate for it. Certainly had a good time at those times, so I'm surprised.
Our, our kids, it's just not, it's, it's down. And we, but we need, like, you, we all have influences with certain people, certain parents. You know, you say you have kids in your church, I need you to go on that program, they're going to listen to you. Um, trustee Lamont, same thing with you. If you say to certain people, we all have influences with certain people so we can make it happen.
We had announced at the beginning of the meeting, perhaps you came in a minute later, so, about the, uh, committee for the ethics and the different areas that we're going to slot people into. And we would go with resumes.
Oh, you had it. We just, we actually, um, had a second amendment earlier this evening to include the powers and duties of the board. Once the board votes to adopt that after the next meeting, then we'll put out a request for resumes. Um, the mayor will make the appointments and the board of trustees will either approve or not the seven members.
Okay, so no one has been picked yet?
Nope.
Okay, this one, this one, no.
Okay.
And, because I, I missed the, I missed the first meeting because I didn't plan to have it on Monday. And so I, I teach August studies, so I don't miss August study on Monday. And, um, and why, why are there benches on Main Street? I, I just see people laying out on those benches.
I think, I think new benches.
Yes.
So I'm going to venture to say that that may have been part of the CDA's beautification project.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. So I think that that question has to be proposed direct, directly to the commissioner, Charlene Thompson. But it was part of the beautification project. Um, it's a nice gesture, but I think it goes to the third part of your question, right? Which is code enforcement. So if the benches stay there, then we do have to, um, be a little bit more aggressive in that area to make sure that, um, we don't have people taking advantage of that nice public space that we want to have in the village.
Like, I saw somebody painted the sidewalks, is that legal? That someone painted the sidewalk on Front Street, they painted it, I mean, on Franklin, they painted it white.
Pop scotch.
No, I mean, literally, they painted the, they painted the sidewalk white with white paint.
So we're in the process now of, uh, getting ready to do interviews for part-time. Um, it's not code enforcement, but, uh, it's actually called complaint investigators to go in the downtown area and, and address some of the issues as far as reminding the businesses to maintain the sidewalk. So we're in that process now.
Okay, because I love doing this, like, trash everywhere. It's, it's not a good looking, we love Hempstead. We need, you know, I don't want people to talk about, like you said, people throwing stuff out the window. I, I took a picture of it. And I think we, you know, police really, really need to enforce, you know, that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Governor Gary?
Good evening. Um, I have, excuse me, but other people didn't have to have the time.
The time was on for them.
It wasn't on.
Yes, it was, it stopped, we had three minutes to stop.
It wasn't, it wasn't. Was stopped, it was? Uh, at the last meeting, uh, of November second, I brought to the, it's your attention, uh, that the, uh, two thousand and seventeen village contract with Jeffrey Daniels stated that in addition to the five site plans, which had already been approved by the planning board in two thousand and sixteen, that nine additional site plans, um, had also been submitted to the planning board. Uh, that's what the contract said. And at that time, uh, at that prior meeting, I questioned Mr. Daniels, the mayor, and the other trustees as to whether they were familiar with these additional nine plans uh, that supposedly had been submitted to the planning board prior to March of twenty seventeen. And, or everyone indicated that they were unfamiliar with these plans. Um, I also had foiled the building department, the CDA, and the planning board for copies of these plans some time ago. And all of those agencies had indicated to me... And all of those agencies had indicated to me that they had no knowledge of the nine plans in question. Uh, now, the significance of all of this is that Section 501G of the Master Developer Agreement states that if the developer waives any of the approvals under 501A, which the developer did waive, uh, through the, uh, acceleration notice, the failure of the village to submit a proposed site plan within one year of the closing of title would result in the title to the properties to revert back to the village. And, uh, on the statement, I give you the exact wording of, uh, the Master Developer Agreement, which states that within one year of the closing of title, and if you recall, the closing of title was December of two thousand and fifteen. So, they would have had till December of two thousand and sixteen to submit their plans, to submit these nine plans, uh, to the planning board. Uh, so, as I, I, uh, stated, that at the last meeting, when I asked all of you, um, if you were familiar with these nine plans and no one seemed to know anything about the nine plans.
Not true.
Uh, it, it was true. You even, uh, said you may have found four, but we know the four were already other, other four plans.
That's not what I said.
All right?
I was.
All right. Uh, well, two weeks have now passed and you've had two weeks to find these nine plans. So, uh, my question is, have you come up with the site plan applications for these nine additional plans? Have you found them? Have you found them?
Do you have more questions out of the?
Yes. Um, if you have, uh, what, what sites are they for? Are they for the parking lots given away in two thousand and fifteen? Who submitted the plans? What date were they submitted? What do you propose to, what do they propose to construct on them? Uh, why didn't you know about all of these plans at the November second meeting? Why was the public never informed of them? And are these plans now available for public view? So, first of all, have you come up with the site plans, uh, for these nine additional plans? Let them answer your question. You asked the question.
I'll just pause for a moment because he didn't, he wanted to remark on the coming down.
No, I was just gonna say that, that, that's not, what you're quoting, what I said is not true. What I said was, I do, did remember seeing more stuff. I said, let me go back and check. So, I didn't say that, I knew nothing about it. I said, I need to go back and check, I do remember seeing something. And that's exactly what I did. So, I went back, I went to a bunch of stuff that, that, that I had, and I went back and I looked. And I found additional site plans. So, why the planning board and everybody else doesn't have it? I don't know. But I actually had it through the CDA. So, I got, there was a letter from the CDA that had those, that had those sites. So, it was a letter from RDUA to the site. So, what I'll do...
A letter day one?
This is a letter day March twenty seventh to Danielle Obelsby, who was the commissioner of the CDA at that time.
What year?
Sorry, uh, seventeen, twenty seventeen.
Two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. And I'll, I'll give you the, I'll give you the...
What year was that in your contract, right?
I don't know, is it?
Was March, uh, two thousand and seventeen?
Well, this is March twenty seventh.
All right, you were March ten.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, you have, so you have...
Let me finish before you, you, you keep going, all right? So, I know you got your pen, you're ready? And this is from, I'm reading from the bottom of Village of Hempstead, the Downtown Advisory Board, which is the board that's set up, right, under the comprehensive plan to handle downtown revitalization. So, maybe it wouldn't have been in the planning board with Michelle Banks because it goes through a different system of review. So, if you're ready, let me know when you're ready. All right, so I have the reference numbers, right? So, first reference number is sixteen twenty seven, and that's from December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And they paid four thousand eight hundred bucks. The next one was sixteen twenty eight, filed on the same day, twelve thirteen sixteen, and twenty seven hundred bucks was paid. Sixteen twenty nine, same date, nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars paid. Sixteen thirty, same date, five hundred ninety dollars paid. So, you can basically go from sixteen thirty one consecutively all the way to sixteen thirty seven. All on the same date, twelve thirteen sixteen, with various amounts paid to the advisory board for the downtown revitalization. So, if you use that and you foil through the CDA and tell them to look in that spot, maybe you'll see. But I count more than four, probably more than nine, that may be even thirteen or fourteen individual site plans that was filed through the Downtown Advisory Board for site plan review. So, that should answer all your questions that you just asked.
Are these still available to the public?
I don't know, I, 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 if you went to the CDA, I think you would be able to...
But I already went to the CDA, okay?
You're asking a question that's outside the scope of my... I would give you what I have.
Well, I mean, you, you signed a contract that said there were these...
This has nothing to do with my contract. This has everything to do with the fact that I said I would go back and look and see through a bunch of stuff that they had given me, and that's exactly what I did. And I didn't bury it, I came to you and said, right, there's a whole bunch of other site plans that they filed. I'm gonna give you the numbers.
Right, but, but you signed a contract that said nine plans had been submitted to the planning board, not to the downtown advisory board.
And they didn't say Dr. Jeff Daniels. It didn't say they gave them to me, it said they gave them to the advisory board.
Right. I am very happy that you have come up with them, okay, number one. However, they were submitted to the, if they, if they were submitted to the downtown advisory board, the, the director of the, uh, of the, uh, CDA, as well as the planning, uh, the building department director, who was actually, uh, on the downtown advisory board, and I believe he was the chairman, according to the agreement, um, that this, they didn't get them because the building department said they didn't have them, the CDA said they didn't have them, and the planning board said they didn't have them. And the, your contract said that they were submitted to the planning board, not the downtown advisory board. Okay, I'm just telling you why it is in the document.
The trustee...
That's not the point.
The trustee answered your question, he gave you the answers you asked for. Now, you have the information, do you go to the other people that you spoke to?
I want to know why...
But he asked you a question.
Why this information was never given to the public after all these years? It was in your contract and you don't know.
In my contract, it's not even given to the public.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, how, how did this happen?
No, no good deed, no good deed goes unpunished. And how about thank you?
It's not a good deed, something that you should have done in two thousand and seventeen. All right? And I want to see, the rest of my questions is, what did they propose to construct? And are they for the pla, the parking lots? You're not gonna answer.
I gave you the numbers, you can go. The more I say, the more you die.
Well... You can yell at me all you want. The fact in there is that you have withheld these documents from the public for all these years.
Entertaining emotions, do we draw some...
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Habs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Meprow?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.